This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and I am calling this special town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1st. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. Next item on the agenda, item 3A, interviews for boards and commissions. Joseph Higgins is seeking reappointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority. If you could come forward. Mr. Higgins is interested in being reappointed as a regular member of the Water Pollution Control Authority. His term would run from November 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2025. Mr. Higgins' attendance over the course of his appointment with the Water Pollution Control Authority has been consistent with minimal absenteeism, missing only two meetings in his last three-year term. The Water Pollution Control Authority has two alternate member vacancies available. Welcome. We want to thank you for your time serving so far and ask you why you're seeking reappointment.
Thank you. Yes, I've been on the committee since 2016. I saw the process through the upgrade. I believe in the importance of volunteering for the town, and this is a good outlet for me, so that's my interest in seeking reappointment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Grandowski?
Well, like I said, he's actively engaged. You know, it's not like he doesn't hold back.
Take your mic. Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. He's actively engaged, and he, you know, speaks when he sees something that he doesn't like, whatever. He makes sure that, you know, if there's something off and if he's aware of it, he tries to bring it forward, and I think we need that, and it's been good. I think it's positive, you know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Joe. It's a pleasure to work with you as liaison, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
And they had a tough time for a while with the quorum. They just barely made the quorum.
Yeah.
So now we're good, so that's a help.
So as I know, we've transitioned off of who runs it and now the town runs it. Have you noticed any snappos or...?
Well, it's a good question. The next big thing in front of us is the appointment of a plant superintendent. And unfortunately, RWPCA had no involvement in the selection process, so... I don't know if that's, you know, was a good thing.
We're going through the hiring process, and by ordinance, it's with advice and consent. It's the same as the town council with department heads. It's the town manager appointment with advice and consent of the WPCA. So I'm in the process of that, and the selection will go before the WPCA.
As I said, there is no involvement with RWPCA with the selection process.
All right. You have any questions, comments for us? Anything the town council could do to...?
No, just that I think that's an important part of the facility is the superintendent in WPCA should have more involvement, I believe.
I know, as Ms. Calorio spoke, the town council, when it comes to hiring town staff, the only direct involvement the town council has during the initial interview process is with a town manager. And as far as any department heads underneath the town manager, that falls on the town manager's responsibility, and she brings those appointments to the council for, as she said, for advice and consent. The only time there's any kind of difference is if we have an intern town manager. Then at that point, any department head positions would be done by... Interviews would be done through the Personnel Subcommittee. Seeing no more questions? Just want to, on behalf of the council and the town, thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
It's always great when people come forward and volunteer for the community.
Thank you.
And we'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Well, it's important they stay.
Oh, excuse me. Not next Tuesday. We'll be voting for your appointment at the next regular town council meeting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Next item up on the agenda is item 3B. Sandy Eggers is seeking reappointment to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. Ms. Eggers is interested in being reappointed as a regular member of the Inland Wetland Water Course Commission... Inland Wetland Water Commission. Her term would run from May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2025. Ms. Eggers has served on the Inland Wetland Water Commission since 1988. During Ms. Eggers' tenure, her attendance has been solid with minimal absenteeism. During her last term, she had missed two meetings, both with notice. There are currently four regular members and... There are currently four regular members and two alternate vacancies available? Kind of weird the way that was written.
So we have a three. Because Fred just can't do it so technically. So we need more bodies desperately. Do you have a quorum at this point in the...?
Yeah, at this point, we don't have a quorum, and it's a real problem. We're trying to... The three of us that are left, we're very fortunate to have someone like Jonathan for staff in the office, and there's a lot of things that he can do. But the whole idea is that you have a commission of citizens for review, and that's how the process is supposed to work. And you don't want it to get loose and just say, oh, well, the staff can do it. That's not what should be happening. But at this point, we don't have a quorum, and I'm not sure who the last letter went to, but Jonathan and I were talking, and, you know, you don't... We made sure that it went to some of you guys as well, because you don't want ex parte communication or anything that can be questioned. But now that there's a couple of bigger things coming up, we're trying to delay it as long as we can.
Yeah.
But you got to have input.
But you can only delay so much. You've got statutory limits that you have to meet.
That's it.
So, yeah, there's a lot... Yeah, there's a lot of layers to that.
That's the problem, Ed.
Right, so it is.
And, you know, we've got to get... But you've got to get people for everything everywhere. That's the problem.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is not a difficult commission. People... I don't think people realize that this has nothing to do with your opinions or your views. This has to do with town and state regulations. Things aren't prohibited or this, they're all regulated. And it's actually very clear, and it's not rocket science. You know what I mean? It really isn't. You have to care, and you have to look. So that's why we kind of all need to try to reel some people in for this, because, like Ed said, we've got limits.
That's right. That's a big...
And people will be able to do things that probably should have a little more regulation without having it put in place if we don't get some more. But we're working on it. We're trying to get some more people. I have Jonathan out beating the bushes.
I've heard.
I do. You know that.
She absolutely does.
I really, truly do. But I think you must have seen what we were talking about. He probably spoke to you the other day after I talked to him about the fact that, like, one thing that's coming up with Hugh crossings and everything.
Yes.
We need to look at it.
You do.
We...
But we need to get a... We need to be able to pull a meeting, a quorum.
If, at this point, is Fred legally still a member? So that we could...
Yeah.
So we could forcibly go and drag him over to a meeting and make a quorum.
Or I could... We could get a tablet in front of his face.
Yeah, it'd be good.
Have him on Zoom.
Because right now...
Because he's not trying to escape us. He's truly enjoyed it. But I think you all know what a wonderful thing his coffee house has turned into.
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes you get what you wish for, and he really did on that one.
He did.
It took on a life of its own, and he just can't... He can't get stretched any farther than this. So he might be the option. We were not aware of it. We thought he had technically...
I don't know. We'll have to go over that.
That's a possibility.
Talk to me afterwards. Talk to me about it afterwards. I want to make sure that we're not missing any... I want to make sure that that's...
But look into that, because that's a... And Fred would go along with it to help us. It's not like he's abandoning anyone. It's just that the coffee house is more than all-consuming.
It is. It is.
And so if he can participate on Zoom...
Oh, God, yeah.
And he's still on, whatever the...
If he is still on...
That would help out a lot if he's still on, because then it's there. We don't have to appoint him.
Yeah, my understanding...
I don't know. I don't think he did. I think he just thought that, once he didn't reapply...
Come and see me afterwards. Come and see me afterwards.
Today, I've got to get back. Oh, yes, another time.
Yeah, come and see me later in the week. I'm not in tomorrow morning, but...
But that's worth looking into.
Yeah, my understanding is unless he formally resigned, he's still considered a member unless we vote someone else in the position.
Correct.
Let me brush it up.
Correct. Yeah, so once you're a seated member, you're a seated member until you're either... Your position is refilled, or you resign, right? So he would have had to formally resign. But I need to check that. I'm not positive, and I don't recall off the top of my head.
I can't imagine him actually finding time to take... No, I can't imagine.
I'm not sure.
If I give him the time to do it.
So let's look at it, and we'll see.
And it's not like he would just be there physically and ignore it. He would care and have a lot of input and...
He would still be engaged.
Oh, without a doubt.
Yeah, he would still be engaged.
Without a doubt, that's how he is.
That's right. That's so...
Yeah.
I guess we can't let him resign until we have someone else.
This is pretty cool. Yes.
Pour down the tiny print at the bottom of the... Yeah, that's right.
So I guess that's about it. It's just that, you know, we've got great staff, but... And it's not just us. It's hard to get people everywhere. It's just hard.
I do notice, and I liked the little signboard down in the lobby that kind of outlines each commission there, so somebody gets a little outline and background of what it involves to be a member.
Yeah, so thankfully, you know, my staff, we were able to kind of generate that right before Celebrate Killenly. We're going to update it, and then we're going to kind of let it do a little bit of a roadshow. We're going to bring it to the library. We're going to put it in the community center and kind of let it go around the different properties with, you know, with applications right there. So if they're reading it and they're like, oh, that's interesting. There's an application right there that they can take and go. So that's what we're going to try and do, is kind of put it on a little bit of a roadshow and send it around town.
Is that something we could have outside the polling locations?
I was going to ask you that right now. I don't know if that's legal or not.
I don't...
Outside the 75-foot, anything is good outside the 75-foot.
I will find out.
Because you figure people who are going to vote are...
I was thinking the exact same thing.
I don't pretend to know everything about election laws, so I will find out.
Okay. Okay. I think that would be great if we could have that there.
But I was thinking the exact same thing.
Well, maybe that's something that whoever's at the polls, if you're there, I know I'll be there, we've got to promote it. So if we have something there, at least we can point to it.
That would be good. Because we can't in there, obviously. We can't do it inside the polls, but if you guys can do it.
Yeah.
Right. So outside, I think outside the 75-foot...
You've got people that are there that want to do something.
Yeah.
Grab them while you can.
That was my thought. That was my thought.
If you send me a file, I can make large format copies if you wanted to.
Oh, we have a plotter downstairs that we make the large, yeah, and we put it on poster board and everything like that. So, yeah, we have it. We can do that. I just got to make sure that we legally can do it. So I'll send it over to legal and make sure that we can put it up.
That would be great if we could.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
I'll have them update it and send it over.
I will say, before I was on the council and before I even thought about running for council, I did attend quite a few of the Inland Wetlands Water Commission meetings back during the original NTE application.
Oh, yeah.
And I was... I learned so much attending the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commissions in also planning and zoning before I even thought about running for council. And that was part of what got me interested in getting involved, was just seeing the level of involvement of other people in the community, looking to give back, and it was great to sit there. I learned a lot.
That's good.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
Not a problem at all. If you don't do something, you can't complain about things afterwards. People don't realize that, do they?
Yep, yep.
That should be what they have to understand. If you're going to complain, you better go do something.
Yeah, absolutely.
My sentiment, exactly.
Yes, and if you're doing something, you stop complaining because you realize...
And you're enthusiastic.
So, see, it works both ways.
So, yeah, thank you for your continued service.
No problem. But if we have Fred, oh, you made my night. It's worth looking into. All set, you guys?
All set. Thank you very much, and we'll be voting for your reappointment at the next regular town council meeting.
All right, thank you, guys. Bye now.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in the agenda. Next item up is item 3C. Matthew Worth is seeking appointment to the Historic District Commission.
My name's Matt Worth. I'm a Pisces. I like long walks on the beach. No, my wife and I moved about... In here about two years ago from Foster. Big move. But so when I graduated my third degree, and I'm not dangerous like a black dog, but I have many, many college degrees, a veteran. My professor's like, give back. That was his... He was his guiding speech to us. So that particular class was a geography class on planning and people and movement. So like, we broke down the Capital City project for downtown Providence and like everything that went into that, you know, took a deep dive into everything of that. So it's amazing sometimes how that plays into your local town level, the way things are run, how things are, the historical nature of stuff and tying into that. Because Providence used all the cobblestone blocks that they had just been sitting in the warehouse, and somebody came along and said, you know what? That brings a lot of historical nature back to this project. Why don't we use that? Yeah, it costs a little bit more, but when you go downtown and you look at like where the water fire is, it's... That's historic in and of itself. There's research that went into that. I mean, yeah, the G-Tech building is like, oh, my God, this doesn't fit. So obviously, you can't ship it, but, you know, like, just... Yeah, I don't know. I just believe in organized variety, if that makes sense. So no cookie cutter. Everything has its own, I don't know, flavor, but it fits into a pattern that's appeasing to a community and makes things harmonious and better. But in order to move forward, you've got to look at the past. You can't let go of the past, you know? What makes it... What makes this town... But I actually did a project on the town a couple of semesters ago and tied into it. So I looked at like a lot of historic stuff online, all the different mills. And I like the idea of the mill that's that way, like, sort of across the river. So it's just on the edge of Danielson. And I understand Danielson has its own unique body, but it ties into the town. But the idea of taking something that's historic and gave the town its character. A lot of the mills throughout Connecticut have. It's part of the DNA of Connecticut, the textile mills, you know? And turning those into, you know, a place that is appeasing to the eye and they have functionality, whether it's mixed use or whatever, but they have a purpose. It serves a purpose. It brings something back full circle. That's... I mean, I live up on Bailey Hill, so I get to look at the other mill that didn't really... That then there was a structure fire there the other day. But, you know, like, other people don't understand, like, why don't they just build something there? And I'm like, because the grandfather of the, you know, with the different chemicals and things in the ground, now it's a super... Unless you get a superfund in there to clean it up, the company's going to be like, nope, not touching that. I don't want to do anything. I don't, you know, like, the property owner is stuck with the pollution cleanup for... So it sits in cycle, and nothing ever happens to it. But people don't understand that. They don't understand the legality of it, that once you put a shovel into the ground, you're now disturbing what was there sitting peacefully.
Yeah.
And it's a feeder into the water supply, so... But having said that, you know, I made a promise to try and give back some. And, you know, understanding the identity of what makes Killenly Killenly is pretty important. That makes sense.
Absolutely. I want to thank you for coming forward, so the other council members are aware. There are currently two regular members and three alternate vacancies available. The regular term would run for five years. The available terms would run as follows. One of them would be April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2025. The other would be April 1st, 2022 through March 31st of 2027. The alternate terms run for three years. The available terms are from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st of 2025. As I had said earlier, Mr. Worth is seeking appointment as a regular member. So that would be one of the first two terms of five years.
Can they... Do they have... Can they have enough members for a quorum, or are they hurting too?
They have enough for a quorum, but I think they just make a quorum.
Okay, I just... We appreciate you coming forward.
We just have enough to dance, right?
Yeah, currently, you know, I'm the liaison for the Historic District Commission, and currently, they have three wonderful people. They're actually very knowledgeable of what that all entails. And I'm sitting there absorbing as much as I can when I show... When I'm there for the meetings. I had to miss the last meeting because I was teaching, but it was... There's a lot that they know, a lot that they can pass on. And obviously, you have a lot to offer too, it seems. So that's awesome to have you come forward and be willing to serve, so thank you.
That was actually Historic District was the very first commission that I actually sat on. And then it went... That kind of subcommitted into the Tersentennial, because, you know, Killenly's over 300 years old, which that was a cool... To be part of that 300-year celebration. I mean, northeastern Connecticut has some great history. The fact that a good number of the towns in this area are older than the actual country is, is pretty unique. And I like your perspective, because you have to find a way to incorporate that past into... Because it is part of your identity. It's part of your DNA. It's who it makes you, who you are. I've always lived in Killenly. My... I mean, six generations of my family have lived here, so it's... I understand how special it is, and when people come in and they talk about it. I know there's some people that have lived here a long time, and they're like, I don't see anything special, but it is something special. There's a definite uniqueness, and I'm really excited to see you get in with Historic District. I also sit on the Borough Council, and we've been pulling our hair out about renovations over at the Danielson Fire Station, because that's part of the, you know, dealing with the state and the state's historical stuff and the... Talking about the hoops and the putting the shovel in the ground. Historic preservation is another... If you can understand why the mills are a pain in the neck to rehab, you're going to love historic preservation then. The state has a lot of... I mean, fortunately, there's a lot of money there, but you have to know how to access it and get a hold of that. So I'm super excited that you're interested in kind of helping to... I think when we... Our new project, the Brickyard, which is going to help develop this downtown area, is going to be doing that same thing, is building on what we've got and making it a little newer and almost reintroducing people to what we've got here, what's special. So I'm super excited that you're excited.
Well, it's... I'm going to... Before I forget about this and it goes, is that when you guys are talking about trying to get recruit members and stuff like that, is that everything is very centralized to this end of the town? And when you're on the other side, and you come down 101, like, if you could put like, I don't know what the regs are, but for an informational sign on the fire department, be able to borrow and make announcements on that, like, that would help. Because I really come down here. I go to Giant Pizza. That's where it's close. You know? Like, so... Because they charge like five bucks to deliver, and I'm like, nope, won't do it. I'm going to do it. I'll make the drive. And so, you know, information's power. So if people don't know that, maybe they don't see it, or... There is a really good Facebook for this town. Like, a lot of things get passed informally through the Facebook social media channels. But sometimes with government, there's caution. I'll put it to you like that. So just food for thought, that oftentimes, it's not the message, it's getting the message to the intended audience. And so if I wasn't seeking it out, trying to find out, I wouldn't know. And that's part of where, you know, I'm trying to... I mean, I'm retired active duty, but I just started with the Coast Guard as an intelligence officer, and I spend half my time in East Providence and Woods Hole. So I do travel that way, not this way. And when you're on the top of the hill, it's either one way down or, you know, like, you generally like, you know, they say when you live in Rhode Island, right? What do you mean, I got to go across the bridge? That's not part of the state. I don't pay it toll. So, you know, generally speaking, most of my travels, that way, not this way. But I try to change that up.
One thing, when we're speaking about trying to get the message out that we're looking for volunteers for the boards and commissions, one thing we might want to try working on is if we have that display board, when we have events like Red, White, and Blue or Celebrate Killenly, have a booth there to try and get more people involved and get more people volunteering. Any more questions, comments?
Thank you for your service, first off. And when you were talking about keeping the, you know, the historic history, the history of the town, even though we're trying to renovate and renew things, Jill St. Clair is amazing to work with, and Donna Bromwell. When you said mills, and you're on Bailey Hill, so I'm sure you know Donna, you got... We've talked about different commissions working together to present things that are going to benefit the whole town. And I think your history, what you know about how these things work, like you were talking about the certain stones and stuff, it's important to bring that knowledge to everybody. Because like you said, a lot of people don't even understand, like, the cleanup on a mill. Why does it look like that? How long is it going to sit there? You're not doing anything. The environmental damage and the liability is why a lot of, like you said, the owners, they don't do anything with it. But if you can get more engagement and more people out there that understand why, then that builds more interest in getting those things done. So I applaud you for coming forward. things done. So I applaud you for coming forward. And like I said, Jill, our economic development, our director, she's amazing. And Donna knows all the history. So you put all those heads together and you can get a lot accomplished. So, thank you.
I mean, like I always said, like that particular mill, at, at some point in time, I mean, what is the date on it? What, 2017? So we're, we're talking years. And so I was almost like, you know, well, it's like, what if this, like the state just offered them a buyout? Said, "We'll, we'll tap into a superfund, clean it up, make it a town park" or, or, you know, it's got a beautiful water coming through there. You might as well make it so people can enjoy it. I, I really don't see anybody building, like it's, it's the, you're talking hundreds of years of whatever's in that ground. So, and you know, but it's gonna take that liability.
Right. Well, that's like glass containers when they, we're looking at Killingley Commons now. But for years, they didn't know what to do with that. There was so much cleanup involved. But when you, when people have a focus on it and they have more engagement and more attention, they're more willing to do something about it. So the more people like you that come forward, the better off we are. So thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Seeing none, we wanna thank you for coming forward, uh, looking to volunteer. And we will be voting on your appointment at our next regular town council meeting. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is item four, citizen's statements and petitions. Ms. Gloria, did we have anything submitted?
There was unsmitted, um, by email.
Okay, thank you. If anyone would like to make any comments regarding tonight's agenda, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Last call for public comments. Seeing no public comments, we will move on in the agenda. Next item up is five, old business, and we have none. So we'll move on to item six, new business, uh, Permanent Building Commission meeting with liaison Mary Braun. Welcome, Mary.
Hello.
So what do we have going on now?
The commission is very busy. They're working on KMS. Uh, most of phase one is done. The final plans have been, uh, finished and have gone to the state for approval and authorization to bid. And we expect that authorization any day. And so phase two improvement should start sometime in January. Um, and then on Westfield Ave, the Community Center project, the architects are currently meeting with all the stakeholders and the construction manager is engaged. And so that should start design soon with a hopefully phased improvements starting next summer.
Now, I have, this may not be a question for you. This may involve a town managers as well. Um, with having the fourth grade students over at Westfield, is that gonna impact the construction on the Community Center project at all? Is it gonna cause any delays or?
Um, so not really. Um, we are looking at managing the exterior envelope of the Westfield Avenue building. And given that it was already an occupied building to begin with, that we were already gonna have to schedule around, um, school occupation anyway with East Con's program. So having the fourth grade classrooms in there doesn't necessarily change that scheduling anymore so than what it was with the East Con program that was in there. So we already knew that we had to do a lot of that during breaks and summer vacations and things like that. Portions of those buildings though, um, we, you know, some areas we'll be able to focus on that are, uh, less utilized, um, sooner than others. But, um, we also have, given that we have the same, um, architect and construction team on both buildings, that is gonna streamline the efficiency in activation of the spaces, right? So, um, as they'll be able to time better the transition over from, uh, Westfield Avenue to KMS and likewise. So we able to plan more efficiently for that. But, you know, we knew going into the Westfield Avenue one, that it was an occupied renovation and that there was an active school occupation in there, um, and that we were gonna have to, uh, uh, do the renovations around that. So, um, it's, it's an added complexity, but it doesn't necessarily delay the project.
Okay.
Uh, they are doing, um, right now they're doing, um, a greater, deeper dive into the, um, exterior conditions of the building. Um, so that way we can have a much clearer understanding of, uh, deterioration of the exterior phases of that building. Um, so that's one of the areas and that'll be, get reported to the Permanent Building Commission so we can better understand, um, scope on that. So, um, construction team is doing that deeper dive on that. And, um, design team is working with all the different stakeholders to better understand programing use of the building. And that is not necessarily just, you know, if they wanna have, you know, uh, changes or renovations within spaces, but also, you know, we're talking about storage, you know? If this lives here now, where is it gonna live if something else goes there, right? And if, you know, if we wanna put, um, a program in this room, you know, what's the domino effect of that? Um, and, and what does that program potentially need as far as, um, electrical or IT infrastructure and all of those? So we're trying to get through all of those conversations now. So the design team can layer in, what does that look like? We had some really good, um, foundational conversations. We brought in the town's IT, um, consultant, Novus, into the conversations around the IT. And one of the benefits that we have with Novus is that the, um, the main, um, the heads, the CEOs and the, the main, uh, guys over at Novus, they were Killingley Public School IT back in the day. Um, so they know that building inside and out. They know where all the bodies buried. No, they know where, they know where all of the lines are buried. Let's put it that way. So they know where the, the fiber, the actual fiber truncates into the building. They know where all the tight spaces are. So they were really able to give us very clear, um, instruction as to, you know, "No, you don't wanna mess with that space because this is your domino effect." And give the architects a really clear understanding of, um, that it's not just the IT for that building. That fiber connection is the IT fiber line for all, all of our buildings, not just the school buildings, but the town buildings as well. So if that building goes down, you know, so they, so they went through all of those components to better understand scope and understanding. And so that is very helpful. And I think it, it alleviates some of the exploratory process that has to happen. So we've been going through those processes at this point in time.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council members? Mr. Grandowski?
The project current, the budget for the project is on budget. However, we need to get hard numbers and we need to put it out to bid as soon as possible. So there have had to be some cost management, uh, items. They have not affected the program of the school. Um, they were more cosmetic. And so we're just very anxious to get it out to bid.
So one of the cost value management items was with regards to the, uh, kitchen equipment, the actual cafeteria equipment. The Board of Education has supported purchasing that using altern, the, using either non-lapsing or cafeteria fund, available funds that they have, that they're gonna be purchasing the, and doing the purchase of the equipment and the installation of the equipment to relieve pressure from the project. Um, but the project, um, that doesn't change, the project doesn't change the programming of the, um, of the, of the, of the building. And, um, it still achieves a, um, or hopefully still achieves a small addition to the kitchen area of the building to allow for expanded freezer space.
Yeah.
Which is much needed in that building. So, um, I think we've come to a, a really good, uh, space on the budget. But again, it's, we need to get it out to bid. The faster we can get it out to bid and lock into some of these prices, you're not talking about a budget anymore. You're talking about your actual costs at that point in time. And that's really what's gonna, you know, be the determining factor.
And there have been significant, um, supply issues.
Yeah.
So the roofing was included in phase one so that the materials could be ordered.
Right.
So that when the roof needs to go on the building, the materials are there. The same thing for the switch gear.
Right.
Um, the electrical switch gear, which, when they ordered it, it's not gonna be in for another year from today. So.
Right.
And there are several other things that are concerning and they, so again, bidding is paramount.
Yeah, some of those things we did incorporate into the phase one because we knew going in, they had long lead times. And so those were incorporated into the phase one part of the project. So they could get them through the approval process. And the state supported that approval process so they could get them out onto order. So we can, we can get that queued. So we knew a couple of the items were gonna be long lead.
Years, it's like, wow, how can?
Switch gear is a long lead time.
It was, it was very good to have the construction manager on so early so that they could identify those items and, and get them ordered as quickly as possible.
Any surprises with environmental issues?
Phase one didn't have any environmental. We did, we, yeah, we remediated asbestos.
There, there were no unforeseen's.
Okay, I.
Right? There wasn't surprises with that. We, it was everything that was identified. We were well aware of. We didn't uncover something that was unforeseen.
That's, that's kind of what I was.
Yeah. No, no oopses.
When you, when you were talking about the freezer, didn't Bosquets just donate some equipment? Or was that Westfield?
Uh, that was for the Community Center.
For the commu-
Community Center. They, they donated to, uh, uh, residential type refrigerator freezer, um, units. So yeah, and they've been a very huge supporter. Um, and that works great for our community center. Um, but these will be commercial kitchen, um, for the, for the cafeteria. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have any questions or comments for the council?
I do not.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow night.
Alright, moving on in the agenda, next item up is executive session, 7A, potential purchase of property. Uh, can I get a motion to move into executive session, including the council and the town manager and the finance director?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Wood, uh, Mr. Wood? All who's in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Alright, we're moving into executive session and it is currently 7:44 PM.